Okay, it is 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and get started. This is the Albernate City Council for Thursday, August 9th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and get going. I'll call this meeting to order. Here in the city of Albernate, we do take the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll go ahead. I ask everybody to stand. I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our flag here somewhere. Oh, I see it's moved a little bit. So we'd ask you to go ahead and take it with us if you choose to do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and take our roll call. If you would please, to show that we have a quorum for doing business this evening.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Counselor Saris.
Present.
Counselor Shans.
Present.
Counselor Trump.
Present.
Counselor Henrichson.
Present.
All right. Thank you. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum for this evening. All right. We'll go ahead. Have the agenda here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't know.
All right. Let the also reflect no changes. I'll ask for the approval of the agenda for our motion to approve it as submitted.
Move.
Moved by Trump.
Second.
Second by Saris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. We're going to discuss Resolution 08-2018-03. This is related to the appointment of our new city clerk, treasurer, treasurer. The motion or the resolution is in front of you. You've had an opportunity to review this. We did hire a new city clerk, Daniel Breck, and also she was our treasurer. That was done in between meetings between July and August. So we'll do her appointment this evening. So we're happy to have her on board. Again, you've all had the resolution in front of her or in front of you and had an opportunity to review that. I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution. And then, once that is completed, we'll get her swearing in done as well. So.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 08-2018-03.
All right. We have a motion from Shans to approve the resolution.
A second.
A second by Minton. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. So, very good. The resolution passes and you will be appointed. I'll note that the appointment is for a vacancy for the previously retired clerk from January 26, 2018. You will fill that vacancy. And then, at such time, once you complete your probationary employee or probationary time, then you'll be, once you complete that time, then you'll be a full employee. We'll do the next appointment once we get caught up on the regular cycle that we do as appointments. So I just want to note that also for the record. All right. With that being said, I do have an oath that I'd like you to take that we do here also with the city. If you just step right up here. Get the camera range too. And then would you get the picture for us as well, please? So, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Can you get a little closer to you?
Okay.
I'm a big guy, but it might be hard to get both. And here, are you ready? Just repeat that for me if you would, please.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Danielle Breck.
Danielle Breck.
Do solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of Clerk of Court and Treasurer in Albernate.
The office of Clerk of Court and Treasurer in Albernate.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
All right. Thank you. Very good. We're happy to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
(applause)
Very good. All right.
(inaudible).
And now, you can start calling the roll.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Danielle did, was with us last month observing the proceedings. So she's coming up to speed very quickly. We appreciate having her onboard. All right. The sheriff's report. I don't think we have a deputy here, but I do note for the folks in attendance, once the deputy does show up, sometimes they're busy on the road or whatnot, once he or she does get here, we'll stop the proceedings. Let them complete their report, and then we'll get back on in the proper order. So.
May I reiterate that?
Yeah.
We may have had a little slight oversight on all resolutions. We should do a roll call vote.
Oh, you want a roll call on that particular one?
Yeah, let's do that. I'll conduct that.
All right. Very good. I see our city attorney is present too. So.
Okay. So, on the motion to approve Resolution 08-2018-03, Counselor Minton.
Aye.
Counselor Saris.
Aye.
Counselor Shans.
Yes.
Counselor Trump.
Aye.
Counselor Henrichson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. All right. Then, for my report, we'll go ahead and skip the sheriff's report until he or she shows up, and then we'll get back on for the mayor's report. For this evening, I do want to say, I want to thank all the folks for Benefit Days and the Diamond Club and the businesses that attended that. That went very well. I was able to get down there for the food, the parade. Everything went very well. I was very impressed with it. So again, I want to thank those folks in the area, businesses. I want to thank the fire station and Chief Graham for his work with the, and all the, all the fire folks for the breakfast. Very good, as always. A little bit later on, he'll be giving his report, and he'll say a few more words about that. But again, excellent job by your folks as well. So, good job on that. The fire station is going, the new fire station is going quite well. You'll see some items later on in the agenda where we've acquired the additional land for the building of the new fire station. I actually have the RFP, the early draft copy of it here that we're working on to try to put that together for the building of that fire station. If things go well, we could see that go out here within the next few weeks. The funding is going well. Again, Chief Graham will talk a little bit more about some of that process later on. But I'm very happy with everybody involved with that, both with the council and with the committee that the fire department has put together. So I just want to continue to update the citizens on that and how well that process is going. So everybody's put maximum effort on that. And then, I know we, you hear it a lot probably from the citizens, but also your work and the council's work on the new website. So hopefully that comes up in some of the council reports as well. So that's all I have. Council reports. I know you were gone last month. I did mention that you were working on your piece with some of the parks and records and that stuff. You were pursuing some grants and things like that. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to you for your portion on parks and records.
Yes. The grant process is a definite learning experience for myself. It is a slow process. Some of these grants, you won't find out for two years. Others, who knows? But, once again, I'm learning. I'm trying. Shout out to the fire department. Breakfast is great Saturday. Thank you for your work on the website. Wish I knew more about it, but I don't. Sorry. Also, Steve left to help me with the date. Everybody, we're having a golf outing for the fire department. Steve, what day is it?
September 8.
Anybody wants to sponsor a hole? That'd be great. Anybody wants to donate anything? That'd be great too. I am not a golfer, but I will try to be there. Well, I'll try to be there. That's all.
Now that we have Danielle onboard, I would like to take time to thank Guy for all the extra you put in over the extended period of time. You did a great job helping us keep the lights on.
Thank you.
You learned a lot, and we appreciate what you're doing to help transition Danielle as well. So, and the office looks fantastic. So appreciate all the cleanup work there too.
Chester, finance.
Because I'd like to thank Guy too for his extra work he put in. I also want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. And I would like to invite you to come back again next month. Because it's good to see the people out here so you know what's going on. Thank
Finally, I may have cruised up by the shop to see what the doors looked like. They look great.
Yeah.
Haven't had a chance to see them yet. That's all.
Very good. I'll just reiterate whatever he said. Benefit Days was great. I got a comment from the, I can't remember which parent was in the building the other day and asked me who did our city's website. So, kudos to you and to Mike for getting that done already. All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. That completes council reports. We move on to citizen comments. There's two types of citizen comments that we do here in Albernate. One of them is for non-agenda items. One is for agenda items. We do them in the order that agenda items are done first. So, if there's something on the agenda that you wish to speak about, this is the time and place to do that. Just state your name and address. Clearly, for the record, you'll have up to five minutes to address the council. It's not really a Q and A session. It's more of just making your comments. We'll take them down and address them if we can. But this is the time that you would do for agenda items. So if there's something on the agenda that you want to make a comment about, you'll have up to five minutes to do so. Is there anyone in the group that would like to make a comment? You can go in any order.
Well, you have a place on the agenda for Diamond Club. So.
Yeah, we'll specifically address yours.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing done. Then we'll move on to citizen comments for non-agenda items. Again, this is the time that you would, if you have just a comment you'd like to make or something like that, and it's not even on the agenda, this is your time that would also, you would like to do that.
April Graham, with two L's, Graham, like the letter, 200 Naylor Drive. I'm just curious if anything has been talked about for street signs as far as getting new ones that are available.
Yeah. I will address that. That came up late last year. It also came up earlier this year. I had a conversation with Guy, Director Tremble, whatever, Maintenance, earlier this year about that. Prison Industries makes those. We have an estimated cost of around 30-plus dollars per intersection. That means both signs. So, we looked at two different options for doing that. And this has come up with council before in previous meetings. The last time we looked at purchasing these was with the Moodheart project where those signs were done. And this was discussed in two ways. One of which was, do we want to look at only replacing those signs within the city that are bad? Or do we want to do a full replacement of every sign within the city, including those projected streets, such as the Naylor addition and things like that? So, those were done with estimated cost projections. Nothing official from Prison Industries. The other thing that came up later on, then a few months later, that was talked about was, do we want to partner with the school system as part of a project with them to where they would go around, at least during the day, we give them the intersections or whatever it was, and then they'd be a potential project for them to identify on for us. Or at a minimum, photograph them, and then we would go back and look at the ones. I know on Naylor Street, as an example, unreadable. So.
Yeah. Poor signs.
Right. And at night, forget it. You know, so I understand that, you know, very well. And that's not the only street.
Yeah.
No.
So this is the conversations that have come up. It's a budgetary issue, and then it's also, but it's also a safety issue if there's something there. You know, obviously our local folks know the streets, but if somebody came in, as an example, a Lynn County deputy or something that was new, then it obviously is an issue. So we are looking at that. I'm gonna give the floor here, not only to council in a moment, but do you, do we have an exact quote from Prison Industries yet? Or has that not been decided because we don't know which way we're going or?
If I email them every street name, because it varies on how many letters are on the street, they can fire me back. We just have to do that. Because it does vary. Because you, Longworth Avenue takes a longer blade.
Right.
And it has a lot of letters on it. So it's hard to get a quote without giving them an actual street.
Right. And I think our estimated costs were based upon a line item on Moodheart.
Yes.
Is how we came up with those. And I'll turn it over to council now for any comments they have with reference to street signs.
I just made myself a note. I will ask Marion's Public Service Director tomorrow if he can throw us on their next bid for blades. If he says yes, then I will need to know how many blades you need. Because we make our own signs.
Oh, you got.
We get blank, blank blades, and we have our own lettering. We replace signs every day. So, perhaps it would be cheaper. I don't know. But we have that agreement with them.
Right. We've got to need 28 agreements with them.
I'll throw the question out there and see what he says.
We can compare. Because the estimate from IPI would be free if I can just throw them the names out.
And that's where we get our blades from.
Yeah.
And I know we make, we do our own lettering because it's cheaper. So we'll see. I'll ask.
Good. So we're gonna follow up with that. And then, Guy, you'll follow up, and then we'll turn this into an action item. Is that acceptable? Okay. All right.
Are we gonna get quotes both ways with looking at just the ones that needed? Are you gonna go with all streets and we can, will they itemize that, do you know? Or is it a lump?
Yeah. I mean, I personally feel it'd be a waste to, obviously, we put brand-new signs in Moodheart. We don't want to do those. Longworth Bend, the signs that are out in the latest Naylor addition are one-year-old or one-and-a-half-years-old. So we obviously could kick those out. We just need to inspect, for example, the earlier Naylor additions and the Graham addition to see what kind of shape they're in, because they're getting to be several years old. The old part of town almost completely needs it. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Hearing done. Then we'll go ahead and move on to item 12, which is our written reports. We'll start. We, the Public Works Director has submitted a written report. I think we've all had an opportunity to review that. I know that Wellhouse 3 is a pretty big action item. At a minimum, maybe you might want to talk about that. But then, we can kind of go from there if council has other questions.
We have that item as a, as an action item later on, if you want me to.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Tell them about that.
All right. Very good.
Thank you, Counselor Saris, for pointing out. I must have got distracted writing my report. What I meant to say about painting the streets was, I'm preparing our equipment to paint parking. I plan on asking the city of Marion to do the striping on the highway portion, because they have a line painting truck. More safer, probably, and better, better quality painting at that point. But we have all the templates to do the parking and the crosswalks. So we will get busy on that soon. Other than that, anybody have any questions from my report?
I'll ask about the painting tomorrow also.
Okay. I would say, if there, if it's available, you can go anytime, because I'm gonna do it.
Yeah. We won't start painting for a couple more weeks.
Oh, okay.
But I'll, I'll ask. I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right. Then we'll move on to the fire department report. Chief Graham.
Pretty much same. The breakfast on Will. Probably about a couple bucks. Building's on the station. Golf tournament, everything for that's going for the station. Got design picked out. Disappointments.
Yes. Good. Very good. And I know that we're moving forward with a GoFundMe page or a funding source for that. I know the citizens are interested in that. I know myself, including there's folks that want to see donations go to get this building done as soon as possible. So I think that's the next week of them, actually. So, good.
Okay. One more thing. The people next to the fire station like to park their trailer right in front of our walk-in door. Anybody know why? Because they have a whole parking lot, back parking lot.
Yeah. Is that, that's private property?
It is, but you're also blocking emergency services getting in and.
I haven't taken your door, but that looks like it's.
It's been four feet.
Yeah.
This is their property.
It is their property, but why are they gonna park right up in front of our door?
You've talked to them about it.
I don't know who owns the place anymore.
Yeah, I think that's. And being private property, I'm not sure too much we can do with that, but.
Politically.
Yes.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
Right.
Scott's on the lease now, so you can reach out to him.
I talked to him Saturday, Friday night. He can't treat me out, so I don't know.
Well, it's because the trailer got moved without permission. So.
I didn't want to talk to him.
It's, he has another partner that rents the building, which is his trailer. So, I mean, they want to work with you guys.
I mean, I don't know what we did to press him off, but.
I'm not gonna speculate on any of that, but I know, you know, there's an opportunity to have a good relationship with neighbors, and that can be pursued. So yeah, reach out to Scott and you guys can talk about.
I didn't.
Yeah. But as of August 1st.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Appreciate it.
All right. Very good. Let's move.
I have one question. I forgot what it was. Oh, when you have that GoFundMe, please be sure to get me the link. I'll make sure that's front and center on the website. We'll get that highlighted.
And we texted Mike about putting our website on the city's website.
Okay.
So he'll, whenever he does that, we're good.
I'm doing all of that. He's pretty busy right now. So if you want to get it to Guy or Danielle with their emails, they can shoot it my way.
I'm not that smart.
You want to write it down for us?
I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think people get a lot more presence if it's on there.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Shoot it my way, because Mike's not, had time to get some.
Go ahead. Any other?
That's all I need.
Okay.
What other thing? I see you got, I'll book a hotel room needs.
Oh.
Yeah.
Do that, and I'll see you that you get paid. Give me the bill, I'll get you paid.
And what's that for? I'm just curious. What class?
Uh, there's a class in names for purchases.
Oh, okay.
It goes on my school.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm listening. I'll wait.
It goes like a point and a half.
Oh, I got it right. I just wanted to know the score.
Okay. We have the consent agenda. The items are under 13. We have any changes to that or any additions? No. All right. You've had your opportunity to review the consent agenda. The items on there, there are no changes to it. All right. Seek approval to, or seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Saris. Second by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Approve the consent agenda. We'll move on to item number 14, old business. The first one is an update on the purchase, or the property's purchase and possible motion. This is in reference to the property I was referring to earlier for the new fire station. I'm familiar with this, obviously. The council approved the purchase of this. The agreement's been executed. Assistant Public Works Director, have any further comment on this?
No. Just waiting for the attorney machine to come through. As soon as we get to the next phase, it'll be time to collect signatures, state here the covenants. So, it could come anytime.
Any questions on council for this item?
Okay. Question. How, how's it been going with visiting with the neighbors about those covenants?
We haven't really done it yet, because we don't have anything for them to sign.
Okay.
So didn't feel it was prudent to start the conversation, then have to come back to them and sign it. So, we're close to that. So that's the next step.
I don't anticipate any issues there.
No. Don't think so.
Very good. Item number two, discussion regarding city hall improvements and possible motion. This is an item that came up from last month where we talked about improving city hall, both kind of the look and the feel and some of the things that would have place, take place to do that. As you can see, we have opened it up a little bit. Some of the changes, refiling and things like that. There is an estimated item list in there of the costs. It's just under 10,000 to do those improvements. As we talked about before, those improvements would include the painting of the walls. It'll take it back more to an institutional look of, you know, kind of that white or H O. You can see it used to be when we removed the stuff there, what color it used to be. So it'll be more of that office look and feel. Some of the concerns that came up from council last month, and we just discussed this informally before placing it on the agenda, was that if we are gonna be here multiple years before we do something like this. The other thing was, are the items that we're gonna pay for, are they gonna be installed property? Are we gonna be able to take them with us? So, in review of those items, you'll see that the construction of, or the changes within the building are minor items, such as the removal of the wall and set seating for council. Improved, the video would be improved for the placement of the public record on the internet. Improved audio quality. So, not only the public, but the council can have improved quality for that and placement of cameras, so people are not blocked when they come up to speak and things like that. Any of those items, of course, could go with us if we leave the building. The LCD TV, or whatever you want to call it, for presentations, that would be placed in such a position that that could also be on the video for public record. So those type of things, when we talk about, or we put something out, it's not linked to the public when we go over items like that, much like any other city council that records their meetings and places it out there. So it's better for the public to be able to know what's going on in our meetings. Not that it's, it's not terrible now, the way that we're conducting business with our video and placing it on YouTube, but it's a much better way to conduct it. It also looks much more professional in the way that we conduct our business as a city, as the city continues to grow. The council seating that we would put in place would also open up for more seating for the public. If you were here, oh, a few meetings ago, or even over the last few years, you know that we didn't even have enough seating for folks. Some were standing, some were, I think we even had one citizen had to sit down on the, on the ground. They didn't have to, but they chose to. So that's something that I'd like to avoid moving forward in the future as well. So, that gives you an idea. The other concern was, how long are we gonna be in the building? We did talk to our owner of the facility, and they are willing to give us a three-year lease. So, that would be in tune with where we are as far as building a new fire station and opening up options for us as well, looking at a new facility. We're looking at multi-year options for development, both in a 10-year project for the city, a Main Street project, a development for a new city hall, what that's gonna look like in the next 10 years. Whether or not the new fire station, whether or not we would look at maybe doing something in the new fire station, doing something with the old fire station, things like that. All that would occur within the next 36 months. So, that would work perfectly with what we want to do here for improvements. So, anyway, the, the items are there. We have addressed that we can do a 36-month lease after we finish out our, the last few months on the existing lease. And we have determined that what the line item, items would be for the cost. So, and the lease owner has agreed to pay for 50% of the cost of the paint for improvement or painting the facility as well. So, I think that answers all the questions that came up from the previous one. I would like to see action on this tonight. And I would hear any comments from council at this
Would it be a better idea to wait until a three-year lease is signed? I don't foresee him backing out for any reason, but you never.
Well, the three, our lease is not up until next March. So, you could wait till March. But in talking to the owner, that he's willing to go ahead and pay for the paint right now. So the improvements that we make, the approval of this tonight wouldn't stop anything that we want to go ahead and do. 50% of the cost of paint is what, a $30 investment?
Yeah, 30, 40 bucks.
And we're using city resources to do the painting. So there's not additional costs there. You know, be able to do that, come up and paint it yourself, you know? So there's not like there's a cost there.
It's a clear volunteer resource.
Right. So, I don't think that that portion of it is a big issue. And paint alone will make the place brighter and look much better. The, the other items he's already done, the replacement of the door, the lighting and things like that. So those portions are already done. The other items that we do, again, everything is installed property. So I don't think we're out anything to be able to take that with us, whatever facility we choose to go to. My personal opinion, I don't think we're gonna be out of here in 36 months. I think most people like this as city hall. And this is what they're used to and attuned to. But I don't see where it would make a difference, but that's just my opinion.
You talked to us, Gary's got no problem with this going out? He's not gonna require the back up when we vacate, anything like that?
No.
I would think so.
No. He had no issue with that. In fact, he wants to repurpose the doors and tram and things like that.
Would he be willing to sign a lease now, just with that in place for March?
Yep. I told him if we took action tonight, that lease would be on the agenda for next month.
As you expected, not a lease.
So what wouldn't go with us would only be the, obviously, the platform and shelving and electric upgrades. Everything else would be things that we would take if for some reason we were moving to a different.
If I may interject, Brett said when he built that platform and shelving, he can make it so that it could be, you'd lose the flooring on it, because that would have to come off. But the actual platform itself and the shelving piece, we could take with us. He could build it so that it could be disassembled to the point where we could walk it out the door. So, even that could go with us.
Other questions concerning the improvements to city hall?
Right now, we've got approximately $30,000 in the city hall budget. But this is the first, second month of the year. And so, we don't know what we're gonna have. Guess things produce a lot. Carry on. Last year, last year's budget. Last year's budget. We ended up seven thousand, almost eight thousand dollars in the hall.
Okay.
On the city budget, on the city hall. Due mainly to electricity, action expense, legal fees. Those are the two big items, along with technology services, which are a bit for our new.
Okay.
Some of us, I know we are gonna, we are gonna have an election expense, I know for sure.
Right, that was the special election that was building up.
That was a special election. I have no idea what we're gonna have for legal fees, I can't predict that, I know we're gonna have some because involving that land.
Those fees could actually be funneled towards that purchase though and kept out of that city hall budget for sure.
Right, we could, right, we could do that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a matter of coding on that, those are specific to, to that land purchase, so really those legal fees should be sent that direction, honestly, so.
I think there's a fair amount of positive towards this, but first a question about the budget, I guess I can move to table this ten minutes.
Other comments?
I mean, can we start piecemealing this a little bit, because I, like you said, paint is a small investment that's gonna make a huge difference. Maybe removing some of the track lighting that you can clearly tell was from, you know, a style shop. Are those types of things we can get going now, and then the larger ticket items? We look at for next month or get more information, is, would be comfortable with that?
One suggestion to the table, we have one another suggestion to piecemeal some of these items for partial improvements.
Because I see nothing wrong with doing the paint and doing this piecemealing, I think that would help get started anyway, show we've got good faith.
I think the paint, I think the camera would also be one that we should approve immediately, and again, that comes with us, so that's a long-term investment. I know there was panic last month, I was a little late and we didn't have a device, so that, I feel like that's something the city should own.
Only two items?
I'm wondering then if the, you only knew the display as well, if that's part of that, if that's gonna be integrated to work together, the camera?
Well, I know there was a question tonight, we didn't have copies of the agenda, it'd be nice to project either just the agenda if there are no other presentations tonight. Mr. Mayor, as far as removing the wall, I mean, I don't see that necessarily broken out here, is that something that was also a volunteer?
It was a zero-cost item, so that's why it wasn't on there.
Okay. Perfect, well, I'd like to pursue that and paint, and then the, the other things that we're certain would go with us, such as the display and the camera.
Yeah, the refrigerator has a dual purpose, obviously, it stores items, but it's also for storage of city testing and property as well, it has to be refrigerated.
The water sample, some of my boxes have to be frozen completely for forty-eight hours before I can put the sample in them and chill.
But that's not just for, you know, recreational purposes. And the, and the two phone systems, it's tedious to try to, we can't do any transferring of calls in right now. It's an antiquated system and it doesn't work in conjunction in the building.
And what are the electrical upgrades, would that just be in regards to?
Just be adding in, you know?
I, I think we're gonna run into a couple issues when we rip some of this stuff out, blanking that out, and putting the TV up there, I think we may have to put a little rail in and stuff like that. And we're not gonna get that from the building owner. That's beyond what we're, we're making changes that are beyond what he wants to cover for that. So when we put in some of the items that we're doing for improvements, for sound and audio and stuff like that, there's gonna be a cost that we're gonna incur for that.
I would like to pursue and see if we can get some volunteer on that as well, and I can take that, I mean, we have that scale here in town. So I can see if we can get some volunteer their time at least.
Some of its material cost.
Yep, we have material, so that, it would minimize that a little bit.
Well, so basically, you, if you pursue the, this action item, you're talking about tabling the top three items, which is pretty much the council seating, chairs, and the platform.
That's what I'd be comfortable with, those are kind of the big ticket items, and I feel like, again, watching budget, we could get by without those for now. Yes, they're a great improvement, it would look much more professional. But for what we need right now to, you know, keep the lights on and really be operational would be below that line, the display and refrigerator, phones, camera, and then whatever upgrades come with installing those things.
Rest of council?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I'm sure.
Will somebody form a motion that we can move forward with the improvements minus the first three items?
We go ahead with the improvements of the LCD refrigerator, phone lines, built for camera.
There's a motion for the improvements as stated by Trump.
I would second that.
Seconded by Seres, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion carries, Guy, would you oversee or facilitate this, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, council, I think it'd be much improvement. Guy, would you, or you or Danielle, would you also see the, facilitate the selection, purchase of the paint, make sure that we get our fifty percent?
Yep.
Reimbursement or however that's gonna work, one or the other from the building owner, so that's properly done. And then we'll coordinate a date offline of the volunteer group of who we're gonna use to, you know, do that. Good for nights and weekends, or I can take it through off. All right, very good.
Mayor, that might be something we reach out to with Boy Scouts as well. There would be an older group that needs volunteer hours, so.
We come in, it's.
White paint.
It's gonna be that commercial, you know, where you can paint it whatever you want, black. Okay, all right. Okay, the update on the city hall lease, I think we just covered that, so just so you know that that was handled on that. And I will get that lease put together in a scenario, I have reviewed it.
One question, is he, is he gonna have a set rent for three years, or you have escalator clause, or what?
Yeah, there is an escalator on that for, over the three years, but we'll edit that as well, so we can get a, an out per year if we want to.
What's it set in the base set?
Year one is twenty-five, year two thirty, year three thirty.
Three thirty?
Yep. And there's been an escalator, whether we do it by year or whether we do it multi-year, we face an escalator anyway, so that's a.
He charges you twenty-five hundred a month?
No, he'll pay seven hundred.
Oh, seventy-five.
But, and we've had the lease for many, many years and there's been escalators.
I'd rather have it set ahead of time so we can prepare for that, rather than, it came to us rather shortly.
Yeah, and our lease is not up until March yet, so I just wanna know that we can get a multi-year lease. In the past, we've only had single-year leases, so. Other questions on that lease? Okay, very good. All right, item number four, discuss resolution zero eight twenty eighteen-two related to the city employee salaries and possible motion that's in your package as well. Do you agree to do an action on that item?
Is this an opportunity to make adjustments, is that my understanding, is that what we're? Or is it just formality to get it on file?
As I understood it, we're just solidifying it, right?
Well, yeah, you've got, you've got adjustments you can make, obviously Danielle has offered a job at a certain wage, I've taken care of. As far as my wage goes, you, you're gonna have to, you approved an increase because I was doing double duty. So you're gonna have to decide whether you are going to do anything from my previous wage, make the current wage with the increase a permanent move, or anything in between, you gotta figure out where that is, because this is gonna be our, this will be a resolution setting our wages for the year.
Because this is the post-review?
Yes, post-review.
When you would discuss increases and?
Exactly, same with John, if he, you know, if you're gonna give him an increase, so be it, if you're not, so be it, you gotta lock it in for the year on this document, so.
I just wanted to be clear what the purpose was.
Yeah.
The setting, your job description is under review, I mean, obviously, there was a, if you look at the previous job descriptions and pay grades, the clerks escalated and yours did not equally with it, so, I mean, we need to correct it. But it hasn't been done yet, other than your temporary escalator. So that piece needs to be done.
So just for transparency's sake. Where, remind me, we brought Danielle in at the step one, correct?
Three, I believe, is what it was, right?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I've got two. Okay, that, step two.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a, okay.
Two, yes. Okay, so, the grade nine, step two was twenty-one, twenty an hour. Given your tenure, I would say we'd leave that alone. Mr. Mayor, do we have an opportunity at this point to, I know you said the job description's under review, do we have an opportunity to get him on a similar pay structure?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, if you don't, if we don't take action on it now, it's gonna have to be addressed later, so now would be the time for it to get it done. It's a temporary setting as it is now, so it needs to be corrected, you know, sooner rather than later.
I would rather use this as a basis than just shoot for what sounds good, right?
I mean, as it is now, she's exceeding.
Oh, I understand.
Her starting, yeah.
I mean, so it's disproportionate, I mean.
You might need copies of that, I can make copies.
You're good?
You're good?
No.
Oh, yeah.
You weren't looking at that, right? Hey, I don't know that one. Hiring committee?
Mr. Mayor, we're guys paying on the schedule.
It's not associated with it yet, because his job description hasn't been done.
What's he making currently, do we know?
Twenty, twenty oh one or something like that, your base wage, Guy?
My base, twenty-one oh one.
Twenty-one oh one, not twenty-one.
Was that with the temporary increase?
That's with, that's without.
Like, with the temporary increase, twenty-three ten.
Okay, thank you.
So, her starting exceeds his base when we reclassed her position, his class, he wasn't reclassed because we had temporary.
Yep, she's, she's.
Yes, okay.
He's not on the scale yet, and I think that's where we need to set that.
It, he wasn't associated with a new position yet.
Because mine was set last year before we got it this.
So step, we figured for every two years' experience, it was one step, is that correct, Mayor, it was two years, right?
Yes.
I, we, I say we go to less than a grade nine. I also wanna pause a little bit and also recognize budget, because did we factor any of this in?
Well, when we reclassed the positions, it was mid, it was mid-year, we knew we were gonna have a year where we had to get caught up. It wasn't a great financial impact at the time because we had a vacant position, but we're gonna have to correct it in the next fiscal year.
So either wages come out of several different categories, streets, water, sewer, so on.
So we've got two.
There's a, there's a, it's partially each one of those.
Okay, thank you. And Guy, how long have you been in your position?
Starting six years, including the two part-time years, so it's three full-time, going into the fourth full-time.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to recognize, as we're looking at this, that you also have some supervisory responsibilities with the part-time employee as well, and I think that regardless of years of service, that should be recognized. So yes, it's a question, do we go with the grade nine or grade ten, and then where does he fall within that?
Well, traditionally, he was above it before, there was about, I think around a two dollar and fifty cents variance, or just hovering right around that in the previous ones, in, it was eighteen, something like that, and he was at the twenty-one oh one or whatever on base salaries. If you brought him in at the grade ten, step two, the twenty-three thirty-five, I think that would probably be the best starting point at this until that job is reclassed. That would be also consistent with a percentage upgrade for where we are until the position gets reclassed and you can visit it again, and it takes care of it for now, but when it takes care of it for the temporary setting, or it means temporary increase.
And when we talk about grade, coming from the hiring committee, I also wanna step back and recognize, we originally had approved to go in at grade eight, and we later, looking at the quality candidates we got at that grade, we decided it was worth it to go up to nine. So I'm, I'm not saying that Guy's leaving, but I also wanna plan ahead for that now, and if we needed to replace him, what's that range look like to get a qualified candidate? And I would agree that I'm leaning more towards grade ten.
Okay.
So. I would agree, yeah, grade ten, step two.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it.
That's the twenty-three thirty-five an hour.
And we're gonna address John's, we'll need to do so at the same time.
What's current salary right now?
Sixteen. Yeah, it's in flat, sixteen.
Grade three, step two.
Can we check the overtime number?
No, my bad. Sorry.
Now, he's been working about three years, if that helps.
Approximately how many hours does he get, he doesn't have, I've looked over your shoulders, so. Approximately how many hours do we get a week?
Fifty-sixty months.
You were gonna say a week.
That's not part time.
I'd say average, probably thirty-five, thirty-five hours a month as an average.
Okay.
Some months, obviously, less.
I think God has been kind enough to put in extra hours, being that Guy has been playing city clerk.
Oh, I agree, I was just curious what that average was like. We appreciate everything you do, and, you know, when we need to. We appreciate everything you do, and, you know, when we need two men, I mean, or two bodies, I should say.
Two people.
Two people. We could go, we could go seventy-two.
Uh, he has not been on this step salary before, I think we just did his kind of add-on. So sixteen, uh, two and a half percent's a quarter, five percent is fifty cents, round about, uh, I think last time it was a dollar increase, what we did.
Right, exactly.
So.
He started at fifteen and then he just went to here and down.
All right, so if I copied that correctly, the city clerk's wage is already in there at twenty-one oh one.
Twenty-one, twenty.
All right, sorry, twenty-one, twenty, we'll put, twenty-one, twenty, sorry, and then, public works, twenty-three, thirty-five, and maintenance worker will increase to sixteen, fifty, is that correct?
Yes.
At the pleasure of the council?
Yes.
All right, I have that noted here, I'm sure you also have it noted, it looks like this is a, this will all be the resolution by rule call. Any other discussion on this?
We need a motion.
I'll need a motion.
I move, we approve resolution zero-eight, two thousand eighteen, Nash-oh-two.
It's moved by Sarison.
Okay.
Seconded by Trump, need this by rule call, would you call it off, please, clerk?
Counselor Menzel?
Aye.
Sarison?
Aye.
Counselor Shans?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that motion carried now. Thank you. All right, the next item is discussion of ordinance twenty-eighteen dash one related to the traffic control devices impossible motion, we'll recognize.
We contacted the.
Oh, I'm sorry, the clerk.
We contacted the state of Iowa to see about putting in a portable stop sign for the school, and they said to contact the county, but since it's not on a major highway, it's within the city, the city has the authority to do that, so we looked at the ordinance, and it just references a peace officer being allowed to maintain traffic control devices, so we made, or created an ordinance so that we could allow, the city council has authority over that.
The, the location on this for, so everybody knows?
So that, on Roosevelt Street, at the, where it intersects with Second Avenue, where the, especially elementary kids are being dropped off after the changes to school is made, there's a lot of traffic in and out of, of the backside of the school and coming across Second Avenue, so.
Well, this has been addressed by our local law enforcement as well, for the folks that have been at some of the meetings, I know council knows that, but this has been an ongoing issue and a safety issue, so you're looking for a, a motion to get this into place so we can get this done?
Yeah, basically, you're, you're amending the ordinance to, to allow the city council to control the traffic control, control devices within town, and then the next item will be a resolution allowing the, the school district, Counselor Henderson has, has indicated that their morning, a person would be able to roll a stop sign in and out, so that gives them authority to move our traffic control device on a daily basis, so.
Is it reso?
There's a reso, or is it ordinance?
Yeah, this is the one. So it'd be changing this.
So there's, there's basically two resolutions, one to allow the city to control the traffic control device, the second one to allow the school district to move that traffic control device, so it's going to be two votes.
This is the existing ordinance, so this is one that's going to have to be changed, so you're going to, you're going to need one, one motion here to, to get the, to edit it, and then another before we can get it passed.
Don't we have to publish so we're going to change the ordinance?
Yeah, we can't just change an ordinance in one shot.
We just can't change an ordinance in one shot.
Yeah.
We've got to publish so we're going to change it. So we can have a full house in here again.
Okay, but at this point, you can go ahead and discuss it though, that you want to go ahead and, and get this on the, get it out there for the change, is it something the council wants to do?
So we're essentially just changing the words peace officer to city council?
Yeah.
While, while we're doing it, do we consistently do it with the two ordinances below that? On crosswalks and traffic lanes, I would say we just be, I would rather be consistent.
Okay, hold on a second, council, we're going off of the advice of Lori from Robbins here, or, or of the attorney, I guess, maybe you should explain it, I wasn't really.
Oh, sorry, I asked if we could get an ordinance passed in the same meeting as it was presented, and he said that we can waive the two and three readings and pass it on a more reading in the same meeting, that's what that version is, isn't it?
But I think we need a public hearing.
No, I don't think this is a public hearing type of ordinance, the budget is, and the changing the code that we just did was, is that, is changing the code a public hearing that, we did have a public hearing for changing building codes, but.
Yeah.
Can we, we're amending an ordinance, if you're amending an ordinance to make that change, I, I think you can do it, you can get it to by rule call, but I'll go back and amend it then.
Yeah, that brings.
Yeah, and you provided that language.
Yes, yes.
Means a very interesting.
Yeah, we addressed it with the attorney's office, because he wanted to try to get the school year started.
So we should use the language that you've provided here, and that would be fine, that will make it.
So you feel like that's, yeah, the language you provided is going to, is, yeah, sufficient on this.
That's in the past.
Yeah, he's got it. So, yes. But your only change is, I want to go to help with the reserve comment, are you going to change the others, are you going to be consistent then, or how do you?
Well, they wouldn't be necessary tonight, but I would like to pursue that, so maybe next meeting we get that out there, they wouldn't be necessary for this stop sign that we want, but I would rather have them all be consistent, because the others still say peace officer for crosswalks and traffic lanes, but we could do those next month, there's no hurry on those.
Okay, okay.
But I want consistent language.
Okay, so we can't amend the ordinance to do, to be able to do stop sign on any council.
All right, so let's move forward with, so if they, it's the desire of the council to edit the ordinance twenty-eighteen dash one, we'll need a motion to suspend the two, the two considerations before the final passage of twenty-eighteen point one, and if we get that, then we'll move forward with changing the ordinance, all right? I move to suspend the two considerations of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash one before final passage requirement under Iowa Code Section three eighty-two. All right, we have a motion to suspend the two additional readings by Henderson?
Second.
Seconded by Trump, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, oh, rule call, I'm sorry.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counselor Sarison?
Aye.
Counselor Shans?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
With the record reflected, it was unanimous to suspend the two additional, and now to go ahead and, I'll entertain a, a motion to move that we go ahead and pass the ordinance, the amendment of the ordinance twenty-eighteen point one.
I move that we pass the amendment of the ordinance twenty-eighteen dash one.
Moved by Sarison, seconded by Shans, any other discussion on that?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So we are giving the school the authority to?
You're giving the city the authority.
Okay, thank you.
So this, we're just changing the officer to city council.
Thank you.
The next one, we're giving the school.
Okay, I'll have a question on that.
Any other discussion? By rule call?
Counselor Menzel?
Aye.
Counselor Sarison?
Aye.
Counselor Shans?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
With the record reflected, it was unanimous to suspend the two additional, and now to go ahead and, I'll entertain a, a motion to move that we go ahead and pass the ordinance, the amendment of the ordinance twenty-eighteen point one.
I move that we pass the amendment of the ordinance twenty-eighteen dash one.
Moved by Sarison, seconded by Shans, any other discussion on that?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So we are giving the school the authority to?
You're giving the city the authority.
Okay, thank you.
So this, we're just changing the officer to city council.
Thank you.
The next one, we're giving the school.
Okay, I'll have a question on that.
Any other discussion? By rule call?
Counselor Menzel?
Aye.
Counselor Sarison?
Aye.
Counselor Shans?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
With the record reflected, it was unanimous to suspend the two additional, and now to go ahead and, I'll entertain a, a motion to move that we go ahead and pass the ordinance, the amendment of the ordinance twenty-eighteen point one.
I move that we pass the amendment of the ordinance twenty-eighteen dash one.
Moved by Sarison, seconded by Shans, any other discussion on that?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So we are giving the school the authority to?
You're giving the city the authority.
Okay, thank you.
So this, we're just changing the officer to city council.
Thank you.
The next one, we're giving the school.
Okay, I'll have a question on that.
Any other discussion? By rule call?
Counselor Menzel?
Aye.
Counselor Sarison?
Aye.
Counselor Shans?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
With the record reflected, it was also passed, thank you, I, I think it's a, a lot of legal jumbo there to get it done, but I understand why and I do appreciate it, I think it'll be a lot safer for the folks that need to get their kids in and out of the school, so thank you for your work on that. All right, number fifteen, new business, Barb Hand is asked to be placed on the agenda, we'll have her speak here in just a moment, this is a item that was other than citizen comments, it has been placed on the agenda, but would ask that you keep, keep it timely, but, we'll, go ahead and hear any items you have now.
Okay. Email address, we live on that street, I have some questions on the website, currently there's no, well, there was no, on the previous website, or on this one, email addresses for the mayor or the council members, is that going to be on there so that people have a way to contact them if they have questions?
Yeah, we're actually, we'll work out profile information for all of those officials, yes.
Okay, also on the website, back on June fourteenth when I was asking about financials, indicated that those would be posted on the website, I don't see them yet.
So I'm still learning how to post documents, so we will be working to get all of the past, we, we also don't currently have past agendas or minutes, but those will be coming up as well, so that's a big effort to bring all of that over from the old website.
Okay, I could be bringing the ordinances over, I see the cell phone.
Yes, absolutely, so I will address that, with the ordinances, we were hoping to put them in a format to make them more searchable and easy to find what you're looking for, with what I'm calling phase one of the website, we're just going to get them back up as in the PDF that we had, the problem became, I ran out of time, and the old website went away, and so I couldn't pull them down, and I had to wait for Mr. Givens to get those to me, which he did late this week, so, yep, I would say, hopefully by the end of the weekend, if not by the end of the month, all of that, all of it will be, will be updated, so anything that was on previous website will be on the new website, again, with enhancements in, in mind, so.
Yes, I understand that, kind of sticking back to the email issue, I noticed that all but one of you have a private email, not work-related, and we have a member who works at the school and is using the school email address, I feel that there should be a separation between the school and the city, I believe that there should be a different email address for Councilman Henderson.
Wasn't the new site going to include the option for an email for everyone?
Yes.
I, I have my own Albernet Mayor at FNTCS because I didn't want my personal email address used because I get, you know, I have other things on there that I use that for, so I created my own when I became mayor, but I believe the new website was supposed to give us the option to all have like a Albernet one, yeah, so they could be in sync.
Because I, I believe there should be some separation there, between the school and the city.
I, I like having my own just because it tracks everything a lot easier for me or whatever, but being a part-time, yeah, you know, being a part-time group, it's kind of hard to do everything, so I understand that as well.
We will be establishing Albernet IA.org email addresses for, and you'll actually see a conflict right now, so on the city officials page, it still has, for the city hall, it still has the FNTCS, but down in the footer of the page, we already have the city hall at Albernet IA.org, so, we're, we're working through that.
And Josh, you can speak for yourself, I think we, sometimes we just grab what we had, so we might have put you in a better spot there.
I have a personal one we can transfer to, no problem, so I'll get that to you as soon as we meet.
And then along with the whole issue of separation, last month, and again, tonight, on a school issue, Congressman Henderson is voting, does, does he not need to abstain from anything that's related to the school since he's in both positions?
You mean the, the, as far as the safety for the sign going out?
The sign going out, because he's starting a precedent that he can be voting for school activities, for school items, and still be on the council.
I, I would see this conflict, I, I leave it up to the council people to obtain if they want to, I guess that's up to you, the majority's there regardless, but I'm not going to micromanage that, but it's up to you, I suppose.
I would feel, if the council feels that I should, I certainly would, I don't feel like, obviously, I'm in a new world, there's going to be some times where that happens, but I'm not, I'm not voting with the school in mind, I did not bring this item to the table, it was not brought by me in any way, it was brought, it was brought before, I believe I was even on council, so if there was something that I felt that I brought up as a citizen or a member of the school, I certainly would step back from that role, absolutely, but in this case, I, I feel like I'm a voting member of the community, I have children that go to the school, and their safety is at most concerned, they walk that way, it has nothing to do with my role as a principal, if it did, I certainly would step back and out of the way.
Any other, other comments on that, go ahead.
Yes, I, I personally feel as long as there was no financials involved, no money exchanged hands, but I would ask the attorney for his opinion.
Yeah, to me, it's legislative change, do, I'm, do you have a comment on that?
You're talking to me?
Yeah, you're here.
You're here.
It's what you get for showing up.
I don't want to hazard an opinion in public without, you know, risking the attorney client privilege, but what I will say, and I believe what Counselor Michael Shans was saying, is that if there is a financial gain, then that's where the Iowa Code and statute would come in, we could examine that code, that specific code, under that statute, but as it exists, in terms of the conflict of interest, I haven't seen that, but I think you're right to look at it from a financial perspective, and that's probably Iowa Code will look at it as well.
Because we are actually dealing with two different taxing bodies, and we should not interchange.
Very good, Miss.
Now, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
With having the old clerk leave in January, new clerk starting, has there been an audit by the state of Iowa, both on financials and procedures, for the city of Albernet during the summer?
God, you can't handle most of that, I know that they've looked at some of our, I don't know if we requested, or they looked at some of our stuff, but I don't think we've had an official one yet.
We haven't had an official one, and we looked into it, and due to our population size, that has a lot to do with it, unless there is due cause, there will be no audit. The only way we would audit at this point is if the council decided that they wanted to take a look at the books, which they can do at any time, but we are not subject to audit at any time unless there is cause.
And I also want, we were advised that with their backlog, it was going to be a two-year wait period anyway, so we did look into it.
And for all that letter earlier in the year about the periodic audit when you're in the cycle, and you're not in that right now, right?
I think it's five years, also goes by city size and total size of your budget, I think it's under a million is the cutoff, yeah.
For example, Robbins has an audit every year, they have, you know, population, they have.
Population size of budget.
But we did reach out to, on behalf of the city council, and correct, I did speak to the state office office about this issue. I did speak to the state office office about this, and basically, we were...
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes care of item fifteen-one, fifteen-two, discussion of twenty nineteen benefit days and possible motion, we'll recognize the Albernett Diamond Club, you've been very patient in a very hot room, go ahead.
As you know, Al and Chester brought, or Al and Nancy brought up about doing a tractor pull next year.
Yes.
We're getting out the volunteers that poured in to make it happen.
I saw it signed, a couple tractors.
You know what, it's amazing how the volunteers for that come out, I mean, anybody wants to. With that being said, we're just clarifying that it is okay, we're working with our insurance company, we're working with parking right now, and with all our volunteers to bank a track, if it is still not an issue of having this down at the Diamond.
Of course, everything's approved by council, but I will acknowledge that they did bring a, kind of an outline, it is projected well into the future, but, you know, it's a special event and things like that, so I don't think we've had an actual application filled out, it was just kind of a drawing, projection and things like that.
So we're looking at building a track before winter so it can settle.
The track has to be built this fall, so it has a freestyle, and otherwise, we will not have the track, it won't be worth anything to even have a tractor pull, and it'll make it look like we don't know what we're doing. And so, that's what, before we go and build this, we need to know, can we, if this is a for sure thing, and we can do it, is what we're trying to figure out.
I can give you my opinion, again, the council will make the final decision on any special events that are approved or disapproved, but a lot of things go by location and noise and amount of people and porta potties and security and so on and so forth, but yeah.
What do we have to do for that, I guess, so we can, you know, of course, we can get it, the ball rolling on this, is what we gotta figure out.
Yeah, I mean, as far as them making the investment, so this did get presented to us at the last council, there weren't any objections. We had things that we asked that you may be mindful of in planning the event, as far as, you know, maybe just having conversations with the neighbors about the noise, traffic control, because if you've got people walking and then all the equipment coming in and out, but if I, I don't wanna speak on everyone's behalf, but I don't have an objection to the event occurring, and especially the plans you're putting in place and the partnerships you're developing, so just those actual event-type things that can be addressed closer as far as being mindful.
And what we're looking at is, is that Third Street that runs, right down in the product runs, they're making that, Thirty Avenue, making that one way just for that day, to bring the semis down, because they're gonna be loading into that and into the property. We plan on running it right now, like noon to six, because the wrestling, I mean, the amount of people that came out for that is amazing at six thirty, seven o'clock, I don't know if any of you came down to watch that, it was ridiculous. So we, you know, we're gonna have the tractor pull in that, in the afternoon at the Diamond Club, and then the wrestling with the street band in the evening for downtown.
Are you making any to have a deal to break people shut off?
Well, we're working on possibly renting some acres of the land to do parking on the backside of the property, and turning it into a hay ground, and using that for the parking for that day, which would also be a great fundraiser for, you know, fire department or any other local community to, you know, charging five dollars a car, a park.
Sure.
You know, and with doing a tractor pull would bring in so much non-Albernett money to the club and to the city, and to all the, I mean, the art truck team this year did a great job, and they, all the clubs and schools volunteering or doing whatnot, and bringing non-Albernett money to Albernett, that's what we're looking at.
All the property this on is owned by you folks or is approved and wherever it's gonna be?
Yeah.
Or being worked on.
We're being working on that.
We're trying to set our basis up right now before we start actually physically building anything, and making sure we have our council before we can pursue.
Can I throw a suggestion here? I'd say start your special event permit now, as a year in advance, but start it now, and we can make amendments to that as things ebb and change for you as you go forward, but if you give us the baseline of what you're planning now...
What we wanna do through today.
Well, it makes it a whole lot easier for these guys to consider, because they can see what your plan is, and then if you come to us and say, there's a change on the, how many porta potties we think we're gonna need, just to use a vague example, we can amend that, but at least we can keep up with it and it'll be easy.
And that gives us something to take action on, and we then have your option.
Especially events have to be done at least a month out, so when those get done, it gives us an opportunity to get those on the agenda, and if there was gonna be an issue with people that live in that area or something like that, it gives them an opportunity to come in and object to it if they want to, if there's no objection to it, and the council doesn't see an issue with the permit and everything.
Okay, get you your approval.
We'll get that in and going, and I think we just...
Came in here and made sure.
I think it would be beneficial if you get it down on paper, because I live down there, it's gonna be a noisy mess.
That's why we'd like to finish it before dark.
Yeah, but it'd be nice to have, you know, where the porta potties are gonna be, how you're gonna control traffic, how that, you know, I didn't know if that parking over there was for trucks or tractors or participants or what, just outline all that stuff so we know what's going on, because this is a different thing we were handling before.
Yeah.
Food and alcohol served at this event?
We are gonna do food and possibly alcohol, and we'd just do like the two-day liquor license.
Okay. All right.
And we're gonna move the kids games down there, too, for parents, they can bring their kids to, you know, to stop being...
Well, it sounds like it's been very popular in the past.
I, yeah, I'm shocked you mind, and just bring it up with people that wanna help.
I appreciate you guys being here tonight, I do wanna be clear, with those special event permits, we do require a representative to come to that meeting where we're gonna take action, should we have any questions? I just wanna make...
We can get it in the works, so...
Get with me and I'll help you get through, get it through the initial stages, and we can work on timing together, it'll be easy.
Yeah, if you're not here, we'll skip it.
Danielle can help, too.
Okay.
Both of you, steal one. Answer all your questions. All right, very good. Any other questions or comments from council on that item?
Good idea.
All right, very good. Fifteen-three, discussion of repairs to wellhouse number three, impossible motion, we'll recognize that.
We went to use well three this month, and everything electrical worked, it started pumping water, about fifteen thousand gallons worth, and then quit. Had Northway well out, all the electrical systems are fine, you can hear the, something happening through the vent on the well, they believe that maybe the shaft in the pump is broke, we have no way of knowing until we pull it, and obviously, once we pull that submersible pump, we're, it's decision time. So there's a letter in your packet from Northway saying it will cost no more than twelve hundred dollars to get the pump out of the hole to inspect to determine what is wrong with it. From there, it's hard to tell what the expense is gonna be, but if it's just a pump, probably thirty-five hundred dollars. If it is pipe, which is possible, not likely at all, the bill goes up to about seven thousand dollars, because that pump is two hundred and forty feet deep. So you never know what could happen, we need to have that well running, there's a reason why we have it, we get by, we're getting by without it, we have two other wells. So that being said, as far as a motion goes on this, I'm sure everyone agrees, we gotta get it fixed, it's just a matter of how do we approve the expenditure, if you would like to give me a upper limit to go to without your approval, fine, if not, we could wait till next month's meeting to approve when we find out, but when the rig is here, we're gonna get charged more if we send the rig away and bring it back to fix the well. So I guess the, the thing would be, you wanna just allow me to handle the, what it's gonna take to get the thing fixed?
So these are unknown costs right now, we're just gonna have to do those...
We have estimates, it's coming, I mean, I can shoot out an email to all of you as soon as I know, but basically, I hate to see the well rig go away and then have to come back later, because we're waiting around to decide if we're gonna spend that money on fixing it. Oh, and, oh, and by the way, we might have insurance, we have to look into that, too.
That's not my question, otherwise, it's a ten thousand dollars max.
Oh, yeah, from what I said, absolutely, it would, but if we have insurance, it'll kick in, it could be a five hundred dollar deal.
And he says seven thousand, would that be the pump and the casing?
Yeah. That's what they told me, so yes, we'll have to, as soon as they get here and pull it, we'll start a claim, and as far as insurance goes, see if we have coverage for it, because that is too short of a life for that pump, that should be a twenty-year pump. It'll be on our regular insurance, really, so...
I'd like to make a motion, but we go ahead, once they get here, let's fix it with the maximum of ten thousand dollars. That should give you some pocket money there to pull some bribes, whatever else you gotta do.
Okay, so we have a motion out there for, you know, this is a version of repairs, but I assume not to exceed ten thousand at this time, a motion by Shaw, seconded by Trump. The only discussion I'd say is, this is kind of public work, she'll kind of oversee this with Councilman Trump, and, okay. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. We're gonna stop for a moment here, recognize the Lynn County Deputy for our Sheriff's report.
It's always perfect, yeah.
Be lucky, we've been thinking about a lot of things tonight as we get through our items, you would've thought that, I think, that come to.
Uh, let's see, Parker twenty-three is putting eighty-nine point four, twenty-five calls for service.
Any questions for the Lynn County Deputy?
I do have one, so I've talked to some folks that have concerns with how quickly people are coming into town from the north on our main road here. Is there an opportunity, especially with schools starting, what does it take to get one of the portable, your speed is this signs?
I'll send some to the mayor.
Okay, appreciate it. I know that had a big impact.
I know they linked it before on the west side of town.
Yeah, I think right now it's on Highway thirty coming into Albernett. It's the last place I saw it.
It seemed to have a nice impact coming the other direction than I know they say coming down from, from the north.
Coming south?
Yes.
Headed south, yeah, headed south on Main Street.
The only comment I'd have is, we did, you folks have mentioned in the past about higher speeds or unloading at the school, we did take an action item tonight, did do a portable stop sign out by the school to be unloading and things like that, for the city to be able to have one temporarily set up during the school time, so if you folks are aware of it, correct the problem.
That's good.
So, other questions for Deputy? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item then is item number four, discussion regarding nuisance letters, notices, and possible motion.
Danielle and I took a tour of town today, and we hit every street, looked at every resident, came up with a list that we feel like need letters, they range from just a reminder of ordinance on certain items up to, basically, you're gonna violation of this, this, and this. It's not an actual abatement letter, it is a warning, so to speak, we've, the letter states that there's sixty days to correct the problem, and if not, then the abatement letter will come, and we move on from there. Danielle worked her tail off citing our ordinances and getting the wording right, so it, hopefully it has a good impact when it gets out to the residents that we're talking about. And we have contacted the public health, just in case some of that is crossover with public health, and we have also contacted the railroad, there's a couple of properties that some of their items are on railroad right of way, so we've been in touch with those two entities. You got anything you wanna add, Danielle?
No, we have the letters ready, all except for one property to send out, so with the council approval, what you would wanna see on that, I have a list of the properties as well, with the news for the violations.
Two hundred-plus residents, you know, in the city, how many, just a rough number, how many are we talking, is it, I don't think it's an epidemic by any means, but...
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
And some of them are very, very minor, and I'm sure it's just gonna be hell crap, I can't do that, okay.
All right, very good.
I would like to review that, there's one I have a concern about, we don't have to talk about it right now, but I'll have to take a look at that.
They'll be here. Question some council on the letters?
Yeah, it's good timing, they've got good weather to get things cleaned up, so I appreciate you guys doing that.
All right, very good, get those sent, those are sixty-day notice, so this is, we may be readdressing this in...
We need a motion roll, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, you need a motion just to send the letters?
I don't think so, since it's a warning, if we go to abatement, then we're gonna have to have a motion.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll readdress this in two meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, very good. Item number five, discussion of insurance policy endorsements and possible motion.
We had talked with our insurance regent, Chris, regarding the possible upgrades to City Hall, and she had mentioned possibly adding betterment improvements endorsement to our policy. We also noticed that there was a vehicle listed on our policy that we don't currently own, so she removed the vehicle, and when she had asked the underwriter about the betterment improvements, he went ahead and added it anyway, so it's on there, but we can get it removed. And then they, we had also discussed some other endorsements regarding computer fraud, fund transfer fraud, and forgery alteration coverage, and there's a quote there on that sheet, thirty-two dollars a year to add those endorsements. So we'd just be looking to the council for approval on, if they wanna add those endorsements with the fraud items, and then the betterment improvements, if you wanna add that now, if you wanna wait.
The impact of adding the betterment improvements is what?
Twenty-six dollars a year, and the forty-three dollars is the removal of the vehicle, twenty-six is adding the betterment improvements for the ten thousand dollars improvements to City Hall, and with non areas, the thirty-two dollars per year, which would be the fraud item.
All right, so it looks like you're seeking a motion to edit our current insurance policies with an addition of the twenty-six dollars for betterment improvement plus the thirty-two dollars for the forgery fraud alterations protection, and the removal of the forty-three dollars on the current insurance policy. The desire in the council on this, do we have a motion, or is this something we wanna...
Am I reading this correct? Like, the policy's actually only gonna go up, quick math?
Fifty, fifty, eighty, if you do everything.
Well, minus forty-three, so we're going up...
Oh, minus forty-three, yeah.
Going up about ten dollars.
Ten, fifteen bucks, okay. Make it.
I believe in more protection, so I move that we approve the changes to the insurance policy endorsements as presented.
Motion by Sarisian.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Menson, does this require signatures, is this an administrative item on your end?
I don't think so, I think we can just make the change.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number six, discuss, discussion regarding FSB corporate authorization resolution, possible motion.
We just have old information on the bank accounts that we need to get updated. I have a copy of the different resolutions that we need to have changed, modified, there's an ACH approval form, so that I'm authorized to submit our ACH for the utility payments. We had an old safe deposit box leased that was created in two thousand and ten that we need to get updated, and then our account files at the bank as well, so all the documentation was there, we just needed to get the signatures changed.
Yeah, I see each one of these, it looks like the proper folks are added on these. I don't have an issue with these additions and changes. Council, anything that you see on here that you don't like?
Nope.
All right, then, a motion to make these changes, that proposes, or as proposed?
So moved?
Moved by Sarisian.
Seconded.
Seconded by Henderson, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Clerk, would you execute those changes if needed, and I'll get you the signatures. All right, item number seven, discussion regarding the utility connection fee of one hundred dollars per code six fifty, six thirty-four, impossible motion, this is a review of the current ordinance regarding a hundred dollars for the connection under the water section of the ordinance, I'll have Guy go into further discussion, but this is, to me, it's basically like escrow, or basically the money they put in there to make sure we get the funding.
It's there, it hasn't been used lately, to my knowledge at all, because in our accounting, if we put that hundred dollars on that customer's account, we're in a constant stated flux with their account, it will never be right, because our accounting doesn't allow for that deposit-type action. We just feel like we should move ahead, we've been stiffed to... We've been stiffed a few times when people remove out of town. It's usually renters. They take off and don't pay their last bill. This is a way to recoup that, so we don't have that issue anymore. So basically, we'd like to continue doing it. We're gonna figure out on a, on a bookkeeping end of it where we put that hundred dollars and how we record it and know that they paid it. But, and there's no way you grandfather the old accounts in, but we'd like to start doing this. It seems like there's more movement in and out of rental properties lately and more changes going on, and we're seeing it a little bit more often. So we'd like to start with the hundred-dollar fee again. Really just asking if you have any opinions on it and.
Is this gonna be, say, when the renter moves out, is that refundable?
Is? Yes, or use it to pay that last bill and refund any excess? But yeah, yeah.
I remember correctly, that's the reason they quit collecting it, because it was.
Oh, see, we didn't have that history.
Hassle to go through, because if people would be leaving like on the tenth of the month or the seventeenth, and then there was a to-do about how much I owe, how much should I get? That kind of thing.
I understand.
See, I would read that as a deposit and this as a fee. Like, those mean two different things to me. So I don't know if we need to just put more verbiage in here.
This looks like a connection fee. Like, you do it to get it turned on, and that's just done.
Yeah, and so we can deposit, that doesn't stay on their account.
We just deposit it and know that if they stiff as well, at least we got the hundred-dollar fee.
Exactly. We've got some peace of mind, but because like a lion, we're hooking up with a lion. We pay a hundred and fifty dollars for them to come up and hook up. It doesn't go on my bill, that's.
So really, the only thing we need to make sure is that we don't charge that fee to a new house, because we're already charging a new home five hundred dollar hookup on water and sewer. We don't need to be charging that hundred-dollar connection either.
My question on that was, with the new building permits module, can we build that in as part of their permit?
Probably.
We may be able to itemize that better, and so we can just. It's still there. We can represent it, but that way it is different for. I'm not saying increase the building permits. I'm saying that way we work it out there rather than.
Sure.
Is this just for your rentals in town or?
Not necessarily just rentals, but even some of these, some of the houses that actually have ownership, you know, people will move in and only live there for a few months and then they sell.
What's your average bill on a water?
Sixty-five, seventy.
I would do three times that as a landlord. From Cedar Rapids, I've been stiffed by renters. I'm just saying.
We don't, it's usually just that last month.
I know, but.
But we got hit with, one was eight hundred and fifty here not too long ago that walked away, and we don't have a prayer of getting that money. We couldn't get her shut off, the curbs out.
Yeah, I remember that.
So we couldn't get her shut off, and it just kept climbing and.
Yeah, so we've got other options. We've got.
I know, but.
If we're gonna call it a fee and just deposit the check in the general fund, then I got no issue with going back to doing it.
But you said there's a five hundred connection fee for a new house.
For a new house.
How do you reconcile that with this?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we, if we waived this fee on a new house or build it into somehow into the module, like Bethany was talking, once we get our building permit module, so that it's just part of that fee structure. It just seems, it seems like overkill to charge them a hundred-dollar connection or a hundred-dollar fee on the utility billing part of it when we just charged them a thousand bucks to hook up to water and sewer, which is a normal fee for almost any city around here.
I would just build it into the permits, and that way it's, you know, still in compliance. We're represented.
Yeah. But if stated in their building permit that they have paid the hookup fee and the connection fee. Exactly. Okay. It really, it's on the books. I don't think we need to make a, I just.
Other than administratively, moving forward, this will be strictly enforced unless waived?
Yes, yes.
Is that, is that what we're saying?
We'll go back to.
And is that waived by council approval? Or who has the authority to waive that?
Why should it be waived?
I don't know.
Sounds like if this, or the scenario with the new home.
Oh, I think that's, we're gonna reword the.
We will reword it, but if we, if we get in that scenario before we reword it, then.
Something like.
I would just bring it to council.
Around one, and we wouldn't enforce it then. Can't build a new house in a month anyway, so we've got time to adjust it.
I'd bring it to council if we have that coming up.
All right, you satisfied with that?
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, that completes the agenda unless there's any other comments. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Post to adjourn.
All right, before I, before I call for that, I would note that normally, I'd be happy to sit around and talk with everyone, but we do have a meeting after this one with, I'd ask that Councilman Johnson and the city attorney stay. And I don't wanna kick anyone out, but I'd like to kick everybody out other than that. So all, the motion to adjourn has been, I think it was Minson and Trump. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.